Welcome to Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, August the 5th, 2025. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask colleagues to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
First item will be to adopt the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
A motion second on a favor. Motion carries. Do you have any statements or remarks from citizens? This is anything not on the agenda for tonight? Any statements or remarks from commissioners? I do want to make a couple of things. We, uh, our next town hall meeting will be on September 23rd at 6:00 PM. That'll be in this room. The original schedule had it on the 16th, but due to some conflicts, we've moved it to September 23rd at 6:00 PM. Also, some citizen engagement opportunities. We have the Oconee County Planning Commission with two positions available. Recreation Advisory Committee with five positions. The deadlines for submitting applications is August 15th at noon. Also, our Lane Creek and Snow's Mill roundabout is open for traffic. Last month, we had a request to redeploy our radar signs on Collum Ferry Road in a specific location. That was between Essex Road and Coventry Road. So that was placed out there from April 10th through, or excuse me, July 10th through July 19th. During that time, sign A had 8,945 vehicles pass it. Those going over five to nine miles over the posted speed limit were 1,455 or 16%. Sign B had 6,417 with 839 going five to nine miles over, 13%. We had zero reports or record of anybody going 10 to 14 or 15 over the speed. Next, we'll move into adoption of the minutes for July 8th and July 29th.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
A motion and second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next item is a second reading and consideration of updates to the speed detection device permit. Jody?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is the second reading of the ordinance to amend the list of roads for our speed detection device permit. As part of the evaluation that we discussed at the first reading, I would like to read one of the sample summaries of the engineering study that was conducted on the roads. Astondale Road is a two-lane undivided rural local road. The surrounding area is agricultural and residential. Astondale Road has 10-foot travel lanes with minimal paved shoulder. The grass shoulders average between one to two feet. The front slope of the ditch is typically two to one to three to one. A spot speed study was conducted in May of 2025. The 85th percentile speed was 64 miles per hour and the 50th percentile speed was 49.6 miles per hour. The ADT was estimated at 842 vehicles from the traffic counts in the speed study. Crash history for Astondale was obtained for a five-year period from January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2024 using new metric crash query software. There were 26 crashes in the study period, 10 possible or suspected injuries, and zero fatalities. The crash history indicates 13 crashes that were not a collision with a motor vehicle. That would be a single, single vehicle versus a deer, single vehicle off the roadway, uh, single vehicle, you know, versus a tree. It was a single vehicle. Uh, there were 11 angle crashes, one side swipe opposite direction, one side swipe same direction. U.S. Limits II is a speed limit estimation tool provided by Federal Highway Administration, and it was used to evaluate the existing speed limit. From the U.S. Limits II report, the section crash rate of 432 per 100 million vehicle miles is above the average crash rate for similar roads. Also, the injury crash rate of 166 per 100 million vehicle miles is above the average injury rate for similar roads. U.S. Limits II recommended a speed limit of 50 miles per hour. Astondale is not on a state bicycle route, but state bike route 60 runs through the county. Given the length and rural character, local cyclists use Astondale as a local cycling route. It is worth noting that the county has a roundabout project in the right-of-way acquisition phase at the intersection of Colom Ferry and Astondale Road. And based on the presence of vulnerable road users, the crash rate, the injury rate, the U.S. Limits II recommendation, it is reasonable to reduce the speed limit to the 50th percentile speed of 50 miles per hour. That, that same, um, study and summary was provided on all the roads that were evaluated. That will be included in the narrative that we submit to Georgia DOT as part of the permit update process. So.
Any questions for Jody? Do we have any public comment on this item? Here none will entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We adopt, um, updates to the special detection devices permitted submitted.
Motion second on the favor. Uh, motion carries. Now, we're going to move to our hearings and actions on zoning managers. Zoning matters. Rezone petition shall be presented by our staff with no time limit. The applicant, those signed up to speak for, the petition shall be allowed a total of 20 minutes. Those speaking against will also be allowed a total of 20 minutes. Public comment shall then be closed, and the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. And the board shall take actions that are set out in Unified Development Code. With that, we'll call our first case, which is reasonable request P 24-0165 Sax Bishop LLC. This is rezoned from AG to B2. 2.89 acres, 5,300 Macon Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is rezoned P 24-0165 Sax Bishop LLC, applicant and owner. It's parcel B 07006A, currently zoned to AG in the rural places character area. Again, they're requesting rezoned from AG to B2. Uh, this is recorded plat, the existing facility. This is the concept plan and your application packets. Uh, existing architectural elevations of existing structures. Uh, staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, the signs that are currently in the public right-of-way shall be relocated per G dot comments prior to occupancy of any renovated building. Number five, there should be no automotive repair facilities allowed onsite. All vehicles stored onsite from the adjacent auto repair business shall be removed prior to the issuance of site development plan. Number six, service areas and dumpsters shall be visually screened from public view by a six-foot measuring wall with facade materials matching the exterior of principal structures with black metal, painted metal, steel enclosure doors. Enclosure doors made of wood or chain link are prohibited. Number seven, landscaping shall be installed to meet the requirements of Article 8 landscaping and buffers for both existing and new site improvements. And the planning commission recommends approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Now, we'll hear from the owner. Mr. Anderson?
Good afternoon. I actually represent the ownership and I'll, uh, I'll let you know why in just a minute. Uh, we proposed a rezone. I'm sorry. This is, this is our civil engineer. Uh, we propose, we would like this rezoning because there's a potential restaurant on the property, and we want the area rezoned so we can provide ample parking. We also would like to redo the sewer system. Obviously, we're going to have to because it's outdated, and we'll need the rezoning for that. We prevented a, we proved, excuse me, we presented a site plan. It went through DOT critique, and we have addressed all of those but the middle turn lane, turning left into the building. And that's because we need some more items for the, from the DOT. On a personal note, I'm doing this job so, uh, I can get in this restaurant because I want to run the restaurant.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? Here none will go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners?
The only thing I've got is if you could explain the, the septic and water as to where it's coming.
Currently, we're on a well, but we are making a stubout for city water. There's a, there's a place where we can couple 900 feet down the roadway, which in the beginning, we can live off the sewer with the number of seats. I hope we outgrow that very quickly. So if we can get in the building, we'll start the process of getting the city water. As far as the septic, the septic is fairly outdated. And obviously, you can see my stack of papers at home from the health department and this and that. We're going to have to redo the septic completely to make it in compliance with the restaurant use.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve rezon P 24-0165. Sakis?
SAKI.
Bishop LLC rezoning from AG to B2, 2.89 acres, 5,300 Macon Highway commercial, seven condition.
A second.
A motion is second to approve reasonable request P 24-0165 with seven conditions. All in favor? Uh, motion carries. Next item is reasonable request P 24-0235. This is Alexander and Sadie Yen. It's a rezoner from AR to AG at 6.221 acres, 1967 and 1971 Flat Rock Road. There's also a variance request P 25-0097 and a second variance request of P 25-0098.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is a reason on P 24-0235 Alexander and Sadie Yen, applicants and owners. This is parcel C 05043 JB, JA, and J. Currently zoned AR in the country states character area, and they're requesting a rezon 6.221 acres from AR to AG with 2.0 remaining AR. This is the recorded plat in your application packets. This is the concept plan, uh, showing uh, the two-acre track up front and the five-acre track here, uh, and then a .7 acre track in the back that'll be combined, is to be combined with the property to the rear. Uh, staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition and number two, any new driveway locations shall be subject to approval by the public works director. Uh, the planning commission recommends approval, uh, with the same conditions. Thank you.
Now, we'll hear from the owner.
Hey, good evening. I'm Alex Yen. I live at 1971 Flat Rock Road. I came before the board a few years ago and asked to, uh, rezon this property from AG to AR, and now I'm back asking to go from AR back to AG on part of it. Uh, this all stems from my backdoor neighbor. He requested to purchase that .7 acres to give the front of his house a little bit of a more buffer when he comes into his driveway, um, which to do that, we had to rezon so we don't create a split zone parcel. In, in doing that, um, basically, the, the planning department in discussions recommended that our plans have changed for what we're trying to do with those original lots. And so they recommended that we recombine and kind of clean up, um, some of those lot lines and what we had previously done, uh, with our tracks there. So I hope that makes sense. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Anyone wish to speak against? There, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? With the motion?
Make a motion. We approve rezon P 24-0235 Alexander and Sadie Yen rezoner from AR to AG, 6.221 acres, 1967 and 71 Flat Rock Road, residential, two conditions.
A motion is second to approve reasonable request P 24-0235 with two conditions. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Want to cover both variances now?
There are two separate parcels, so if we can go through each. Okay. This is variance P 25-0097 Alexander Sadie Yen, uh, same parcels, uh, AR and country states. And this is a special exception variance to the UDC Section 4, Section 10, 410, 01, uh, Table 4.1 to reduce the required front setback from 30 feet to 21, 22.1 feet and to reduce the required side setback from 15 feet to 7.6 feet. This is a request serves the purpose of accommodating, uh, existing structures on the site. Uh, this is recorded plat you have in your packet and the concept plan and the slightly larger version. Um, and this is the, the structure, the barn shed, uh, this existing here that we're talking about, the reduction in those setbacks. This is on the, the middle lot and at this location. And staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Anything to add?
I do not.
All right. Does anyone else wish to speak for the variance? Does anyone wish to speak against? We'll close public comments. Any questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve variance number P 25-0097 Alexander and Sadie Yen reduce fire front yard setback and the fire side yard setback, 4.5 acres. 1971 Flat Rock Road residential.
Motion is second to approve variance request P 25-0097 with one condition. All in favor? Uh, motion carries. And we'll move to variance request P 25-0098.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is P 25-0098, uh, Alex and Sadie Yen owners. This is parcel, uh, same parcels, uh, 043 JB, JA, and J, uh, currently zoned AR in the country states character area. And this is a special exception request again to Article 4, Section 41001 and Table 4.1 to reduce the required side yard setback from 15 feet to 13.3 feet. And again, this is to serve the purpose of accommodating an existing structure. Uh, the recorded plat, uh, concept plan, the slightly larger version showing this, this shed side setback location. And staff recommends conditional approval with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Anything to add? Anyone else wish to speak for the variance? Does anyone wish to speak against? We'll go ahead and close public comments. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve variance P 25-0098 Alexander and Sadie Yen reduce required yard, side yard setback, 4.5 acres, like you said, on Flat Rock Road, residential to one condition.
Motion is second to approve variance request P 25-0098 with one condition. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next item and item is reasonable request P 25-0075. It's Icy Forest LLC rezoning from AR to AG, 197.12 acres, Old Barnet Shells Road.
And Mr. Chairman, this one we did combine in the two since the same owner, uh, and from the same reason. So in the presentation, you'll need to take action on two separate ones.
You're going to go ahead and do 25-0076 as well?
So this is P 25-0075 and 0076 Icy Forest LLC applicant and owner. Uh, it's parcel D 02029 and parcel D 02025H, uh, currently in the zoned AR in the agricultural preservation district. And again, the request is to rezon the 197.12 acre property from AR to AG and modify or delete conditions of approval of the previous AR zoning case 5490. Uh, and the same for the 6.56 acre piece, uh, rezoning it from AR back to AG and deleting the conditions from that previous, uh, rezon 5490. Uh, these are the recorded plats you have in your application packets, uh, concept plan, architectural images of the structures proposed. And staff recommends conditional approval, uh, for P 25-0075 with our one standard condition and approval of P 25-0076 with our one standard condition. The planning commission also recommended approval with the same conditions for both P 25-0075 and P 25-0076. Thank you.
David?
Good evening, David Ellison. On behalf of the applicant, uh, just ask that you please, uh, follow, uh, adopt staff's recommendations. Uh, this property cannot be used under current zoning conditions. A rezon allow productive use, uh, be consistent with the comp plan. It would be consistent with the surrounding properties. Uh, these two parcels are the last pieces of the original rezon that was never developed. And so allow, uh, this, uh, property to be used, um, and made are consistent with the surrounding areas. Happy to answer any questions and, uh, thank you for your time.
Does anyone wish, else wish, wish to speak for either rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against either rezon? Here none will go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion for P 25-0075.
Motion to approve rezon P 25-0075 Icy Forest LLC rezoning from AR to AG, 197, 12 acres, Old Barnet Shells Road, undeveloped, one condition. Second.
All right, we have a motion second to approve reasonable request P 25-0075 with one condition. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. And we entertain a motion on 0076.
Motion to rezon P 25-0076 Icy Forest LLC rezoning from AR to AG, 6.56 acres, coffee place, undeveloped, with the one condition.
Motion second for reasonable request P 25-0076 with one condition. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next item is reasonable request P 25-0110. It's AG to AR, 11.23 acres at 1760 and 1830 Pete Dickinson Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P 25-0110, uh, Gildardo Orocho, applicant and owner. This is parcels B 01081B and C, currently zoned AG in the suburban neighborhood character area. And the request is to rezon the 11.23 acres from AG to AR for a five-lot minor subdivision. Uh, this is the recorded plats in your packet. Uh, the concept plan showing the proposed five lots, uh, architectural images submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. The planning commission recommended approval with the same conditions. Thank you.
Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Justin Greer, Pittman and Greer Engineering. Only had one little item, uh, would request that you would strike condition two. The properties are proposed to be served by whales. I don't think there's a water line on Pete Dickinson Road. So that'd be, I don't think it's really a water line close to Title II. So that's only comment on that.
All right, we'll get, yeah. Anybody else wish to speak for? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Can you pull up condition two? Hold on. Is that just to address public water?
It does. It addresses public water and it will only apply if public water is proposed. So if wells are proposed to be used, then that condition would be irrelevant.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter. That's right.
Any other questions? We're ready for a motion then.
Motion to approve rezon P two-five dash zero one one zero Gildardo Orocho rezoning from AG to AR, eleven point two-three acres, seventeen sixty, eighteen thirty, Pete Dickens Road, one hundred.
Second.
All right, we have a motion second to approve reasonable request P twenty-five dash zero one one zero with three conditions. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next item is variance request P twenty-five dash zero one two zero Gary Gilmer. Just reduce the required private freestanding garage setback on two point two-five acres at ten ten Brookwood Place.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is variance P twenty-five zero one two zero Gary Gilmer applicant and owner. This is parcel C zero two L thirteen B currently zoned AR in the regional center character area. And it's a special exception variance to the UDC section three four eight A to allow a private freestanding garage in the front yard and reduce the required garage setback from two hundred feet to seventy point seven feet and thirty-five point four feet. This is the recorded plat in your application packet and the concept plan and slightly larger version showing the, the setback reduction there and there. Staff recommends approval with our one standard condition. Thank you.
Gilmer, you want?
Evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Gary Gilmer, I'm speaking on behalf of the application and we're just simply asking for a setback as a result of it being a corner lot, which is kind of restrictive, where it's doubly restrictive having two front yard setbacks as opposed to one. And I, from what I've heard, it's, seems to be kind of a, an ongoing situation here with a lot of cornered properties to have setbacks like this. So I just hope that you accept our application and appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for the variance? Does anyone else wish to speak against? Here now, we'll close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners? And we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion. We approve variance P twenty-five zero one two zero Gary Gilmer reduce required private freestanding garage setback, two point two-five acres, intent Brookview Place Residential with the one condition.
Motion is second to approve variance request P twenty-five dash zero one two zero with one condition. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Next item is reasonable request P twenty-five dash zero one three nine. It's the Board of Commissioners initiated rezon to modify conditions of approval for existing rezones from two-three-eight five, two-five-eight-one, two-five-eight-two. It's on Monroe Highway at Pete Dickens Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is rezoned P twenty-five zero one three six Board of Commissioners applicant and owner, or applicant. This is parcels B zero one K zero zero B, B zero one K zero zero one OP, B zero one zero zero one RW, B zero one L zero zero A, B zero one L zero zero two RW, B zero one L zero 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 B at Pete Dickens Road and Monroe Highway and Garland Drive. Currently zoned R one OIP and B two and Community Village character area. And we're initiating this rezon modification to amend the conditions of approval of rezonings two-three-eight-five, two-five-eight-one and two-five-eight-two to remove the requirement for a future right of way dedication. The current property owner's size of the parcels and the current zoning districts are in your application packets. And the six properties are located along Pete Dickens Road, north of the intersection of Monroe Highway and adjacent to Garland Drive. And their request is to remove the condition that, quote, "Developers shall dedicate to Oconee County the necessary right of way for the Pete Dickens Road realignment as shown on the concept plan," close, close quote. The future right of way is no longer needed as indicated on our long-range transportation plans and the reconfiguration of seventy-eight and Pete Dickens Road where the R cuts were installed by G dot. And then all other conditions of approval shall remain in effect for the rezoning numbers two-three-eight-five, which is approved on two-five two thousand two, two-five-eight-one, which is approved on two thousand, uh, six-four two thousand two and two-five-eight-two, which is approved on six-four two thousand and two. In your package, you have the recorded plats showing the set aside proposed right of way. And staff recommends approval of the request with the following conditions. Number one, for properties zoned R one, which are parcels B zero K zero zero one OP and B zero one K zero 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 B from rezoning number twenty-three eighty-five, remove condition number six as stated, quote, "The developers shall dedicate to Oconee County the necessary right of way for the Pete Dickens Road realignment as shown on the concept plan," close quote. All of the conditions of zoning shall remain in effect. Number two, for properties zoned OIP, parcels B zero one L zero zero A and B zero one L zero zero one RW from rezoning number two-five-eight-one, remove condition number five, which states the same, all other conditions of zoning shall remain in effect. And number three, for properties zoned B two, parcels B zero one L zero zero B and B zero one L zero zero two RW from rezoning number twenty-three eighty-two, remove the condition number five, which states the same, and all other conditions of zoning shall remain in effect. Thank you.
Do we have anyone to speak for this rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from Commissioners?
I'll make a motion. I don't have to beat those.
There you go. Oh, yeah.
Make a motion to re, approve rezon P two-five dash zero one three nine. Board of Commissioners initiated rezon, modify conditions of approval for existing rezones two-three-eight-five, two-five-eight-one, two-five-eight-two, Monroe Highway and Pete Dickens Road, make sure you recondition.
I second.
Motion is second to approve reasonable request P twenty-five dash zero one zero one three nine with three conditions. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to our discussion and consideration of the twenty twenty-five tax millage levy. On June third, you remember we adopted the FY twenty-six general fund budget of forty-five million, seven hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. This is roughly a five million dollar increase over our original FY twenty-five budget. Of that increase, three point seven million went to the sheriff's office with two point five of that related to the SRO program starting up. One point three, the remaining one point three million was divided amongst the constitution, remaining constitutional officers as well as all the functions of the Board of Commissioners. Our digest exemptions changes for FY twenty-five. On the county side, the exemptions increased by two hundred and sixty-five million, three hundred and ninety-four thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. And then within the cities, the exemptions increased by twenty-two million, nine hundred and forty-two, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars. This is related to our homestead changes that we made. We increased the general homestead for all homesteaded property to five thousand dollars. Also, our seniors at sixty-five and over, the work would, are receiving an automatic freeze of their property assessment as well as those seventy-five and older receive an additional ten thousand dollar homestead exemption. And this is on top of House Bill five eighty-one, which is a floating homestead that holds assessments increased to the rate of inflation. One, two, in total, two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars dropped off our digest for twenty twenty-five. Our unincorporated rate that was recommended tonight is four point one eight four. This is lower than the calculated rollback amount. In the incorporated areas, the cities, the rate will be five point one five four. The difference in the two rates is the insurance premium tax. So the insurance premium tax is paid directly to the taxing, taxing authority. So anybody in the cities, their taxes go to the city and the county comes to the county. This will represent the fifth year of a millage rate reduction, the fourth year of a full rollback. And this is on top of having a strong history of holding the millage rate steady even during the last recession that we went through. Since twenty twenty, the millage rate has been reduced by two point five mills. So again, the recommendation is for approval of the unincorporated rate of four point one eight four and the incorporated rate of five point one five four. Be happy to answer any questions? Do we have any public comment? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We approve that unincorporated and incorporated rate estimated.
Motion is second for approval of the unincorporated rate of four point one eight four and incorporated rate of five point one five four. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to consideration of the twenty twenty-five tax millage levy for the Oconee County Schools Maintenance and Operations. Justin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Last night, the Board of Education set their millage rate at thirteen point nine six two mills and has transmitted their request for the Board of Commissioners to confirm same.
Any questions for Justin? Do we have any public comment? We'll entertain a motion for this item.
Make a motion to approve the Oconee County Schools Maintenance and Operation Tax Millage Levy at thirteen point nine six two mills.
Second.
We have a motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Does any Commissioner wish any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Yes. All right, let's discuss and consider the Herman C. Michael Plaza replacement. I printed the wrong version, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a simple budget amendment. The Parks and Recreation has replaced two of the three plazas at Herman C. Michael Park under fiscal, fiscal year twenty-five. The fiscal year twenty-six budget has already been allocated for this project, however, due to it being over ten thousand dollars, needs to move to capital. So we're just requesting a budget amendment from the Board of Commissioners to transfer the same funds into capital so that the Parks and Recreation can finish this project. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Justin on this item? Do we have any public comment? We entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We approve the amount submitted for the Herman C. Michael Plaza replacement.
Second.
No, motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Now, does any Commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent? Right, we'll entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion to approve the consent items estimated.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We. Yes, sir. As long as we got a motion is second, we're good. We do not have need of executive session, so Commissioner Sax.
Motion adjourned.
We're adjourned.